Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Could all please rise and join in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This time, Town of Plainfield, Notice of Public Hearing, May 29, 2019, 7:00. In accordance with Town Charter requirements, Board of Finance will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 at 7:00 PM Wednesday, May 29, 2019, in the Plainfield Town Hall Auditorium. All lecturers of the town and eligible property owners who wish to be heard will be allowed to do so at the hearing. Board of Finance, Thomas Sinkowitz, Chairman. So I will now open the floor for our public hearing. Just a couple reminders. Please be respectful when you are speaking about anything in regards to the budget. Remember that when you are recognized by me and only by me, you will come up here to the microphone, you will state your name and your address here in town, and you will direct your questions to myself and the Board of Finance, not anybody in the audience. If there's somebody in the audience who I feel might have an answer or some additional information that could enlighten us all, I will recognize them and only me, and so once I call on them, then they will be given the opportunity to possibly answer or give you some information to your question. Also, every person initially will have three minutes to speak. I want to make sure that everybody who wants to be heard is heard and that we're not here all night. But in the event where everybody who plans on speaking speaks, gets the opportunity, and still, obviously, within a reasonable timeframe, there will be an opportunity to speak again if you have another question or comment that you would like to add to the hearing. So with that said, I open the floor. Please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized if I call on you.
Kevin Cunningham for the Department of Commerce. Just a comment before I get to a question, but just so you know that when speaking, and now that we have microphones up here, we've been running from the black light for a while, some of the comments have been heard in the background, can't be heard, so this is just an FYI. The other thing would be that I do have a question on change here from the animal control office stand out to the sale auction of equipment. I just, I know that Shepherd and Sinkowitz said you can't probably answer that directly, but why was this not included in the original drafts for the sale for our budget? Why was this not included?
Good question. I will call on Ron.
Well, we are constantly working on the budget as it's on. So we are constantly working on the budget. This is an evolving process, hence we're here tonight to discuss it after the referendum failed. So the more savings we can find, the more we will find. We were tasked with trying to find $50,000 in additional funding. Friday, we found, we considered the animal control ban a possible cut. In the interim, we found additional savings, or I'm sorry, additional revenue, and we supplanted the revenue in lieu of the animal control ban. We also noticed that on the capital budget years prior, the animal control ban failed to be funded, so we thought it was time that we actually funded the animal control ban.
And I have a problem with that. I know it's a difficult decision in trying to find out where you're going to get $50,000 from. Obviously, the animal control ban, in my opinion, couldn't have something stolen and taken away because it part was passed in the five-year capital, so you can't go backwards.
Well, it was also passed in the five-year capital plan last year, but it somehow didn't make the budget this year. Based on precedent, we wanted to make sure we actually funded the capital plan this year and funded.
To the full funding for the entire five-year capital?
Yeah. Well, wait. You're talking about...
All of those items for this year?
As far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Good evening. Andrew Hoffman, 16 Vac. On the 21st, I know this committee here has made a motion, and they carried a motion, to cut at least 100 grand from the budget. Now, looking at the bottom line, I'm finding through. What's up with that?
So I know that we had 50 that was coming from Board of Education, and then 50 from the town side. On Friday, when we met, 24th, we have a list that was presented by our Action Finance Director going over where that 50 was going to come from, and of course, he just spoke about one revision that was made to that. Initially, there was $30,000 on that animal control ban. That was taken off, but it was discussed at the last Board of Finance meeting where that was going to come from on the town side. Ken, our Superintendent of Schools, and our Board of Ed Chairman are present at the last Board of Finance meeting, so they did not speak about the Board of Ed side of 50,000. Next. Ken, please raise your hand if you'd like to call on speech. Okay, so I see no one raising their hand, so I will assume there's no one else who has any comments or questions. No? Okay. If that's the case, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Okay, we are now moving into a special meeting for the Board of Finance, so if you'd all like to remain for it, please do. I've already opened and called the orders, so we will start with oral call. Non-developed.
Here.
Darius Del.
Here.
David Sarves.
Here.
Scott Gardner.
Here.
Scott Charwood.
Here.
Ted Domain.
Here.
Travis Irons.
Here.
Thomas Sinkowitz. All right, next item, acceptance of the minutes from the May 21, 2019 meeting and May 24, 2019 meeting. Both sets of minutes are distributed for Finance members. Discussion, questions?
Move the minutes from both meetings to accept this.
Okay, a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. All right, first item under new business to discuss and set opposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget for the June 3, 2019 town meeting. So for those of you who've been following along, the Board of Selectmen give proof the June 3, 2019 town meeting, which is officially set. So our intention now is to discuss and ask any questions we may have as Board of Finance regarding the budget proposal that was just presented in front of us tonight. They're of course available back in the room for copies for those who did not get one. This was revised with the changes that we had gone over, of course, on Friday, so meeting up the allegations of 50,000, but there were also some other changes, I know, which we already touched on briefly. Kevin's question, anything else to add, Ron, regarding this budget?
Yeah, I'd like to say that we were, the town side was disproportionately required to cut more of than we were tasked with a greater reduction than that of the Board of Ed because of their larger budget. Both of us being required to cut or reduce or find $50,000 in savings, whether it be source of revenue or cut, and we exceeded that. We provided $60,000 in savings to the town, reducing the mill rate farther than what we had initially proposed on Friday, which I think is a good thing. I would say that the savings that we found came from the highway department. We are going to sell and or auction off some items that they have sitting, and sitting idle in their yard, and we have quotes to add those items up to justify the value of each item, and we feel confident that at the minimum, we can get $40,000 from it. There is potential for more, but it's hard to say based on auctions. You never know whether or not you can get more or less. But at a minimum, based on the quotes we have comparing to what's currently in the highway department, we can definitely say $40,000 in savings. That was changed because, as I said earlier, we are, we know that there's a great need for a new animal control plan, and we know it was put off in prior years, and it's important to make sure that our community is adequately serviced, and in doing so, we're able to find additional revenue. So that's where we are.
Kathy, just out of curiosity, the sales and auction of the equipment, is that something that had been talked about for a while now, like even in past months, or is that something that was really just brought up?
So it was brought up about a month ago. We did talk about it. So when all of this came about, I mean, we had talked about it, so we really sat down and did some homework and figured where we would be at, what we could fairly say was a number that we could probably raise.
When is that going to happen?
What we're going to do, and I believe that John is here, Ravenel, our chief leader, is we will get with John, Ted, and we will figure out everything that we have. Some of it, what we would like to do is sell, and some of it will go to auction, because if we sell it, we will probably get a better price for it than going to auction. So we need to determine what will go for sale and what will go up for auction.
Ron, you have the equipment list with you?
Yeah, would you like a copy of this?
Yes, please.
So this is what we know we are planning on selling. These are items that we are comparable price rates for the items that we're selling. I think John can speak in greater detail as to the items that we're, that will be sold, but those are comparable price items.
John, is there anything to add?
As we all know, we purchased a new Vac last year, and the Vac that's left now is a 1987. It's in relatively good shape. It's a Mac with 37,000 miles on it, and that's one of the items that we should sell outright rather than put it into auction because we'll get a better price for it, like Kathy said. We also have an old Heister asphalt roller that's a 1982. It's a 10 ton, and we believe we can get decent money for that selling it outright. We also have a rack of the bucket. It's a bucket that you put on the backhoe, you go underneath the brush, and then the bucket closes and picks up the brush. We haven't had much use of it, so we purchased a dump for the backhoe, and that was sufficient junk. That was purchased two years ago. We also have an old 1964 Ford Workmaster tractor that we normally use to rig the beach over at Musa Farm, and we also could put that up for sale, and I believe we could more for it if we sold it outright rather than doing it in the auction. There are other items, some old mowers, some old dump trucks that are out of service. We have some, a couple of school buses that are up there that belong to a family field that are full of tires and miscellaneous things that we could also sell, but that would be the one. So that's probably what we're getting.
Moving on to a different subject regarding budget. Ken, is there anything that you can update us on the 50,000 coming from the Board of Ed side?
Deputy Superintendent, so as you know by charter regulation, the Board of Education can only take actions on budget or changes to employment policy or curriculum at a public meeting, which is scheduled for June 11. But in my role as superintendent, I do bring them information for them to consider. So with the task of trying to assemble $50,000 about, I'd say Tuesday of last week, I received a call from Wyndham School District, which is where the STEM magnet is. We've been monitoring all of our magnet student programs, and as I told you, we're trying to get our kids to come back to Plainfield. Up until two years ago, there were 43 students scheduled that were attending the STEM magnet, and we got the bill this year from the STEM magnet program, and they're only 34. So we're down nine students, and we paid $4,500 per student to attend that. So next year, we're scheduled to have $40,000 less in cost in that magnet alone. So we have now sent out to all of the magnets, the New London magnets and any other magnet that is, has yet to give us the new runs. The good thing about the magnet tuition is that we have now filled out four all the way to grade eight, so it took them three years to put all the children into the building. They did that at grade three, we graded six, and grade K, and then it went four, and seven, and two, and then we go, once the grades are filled, the only children who should come is to school kindergarten. So we're no longer looking at 40 kids coming per year. It could be as many as six or eight, eight or 10, and most of the kindergarten. So we know that 40,000 and that we have listed, and I drew a copy if people want to see, the aggregate that I have for the board. The second one is we have what's called occupational therapist services. We have full-time occupational therapist services, but the number of children requiring that have diminished. So what we did is we made a partnership with Sterling, and that's been asked to pull from the Board of Finance as well as the Board of Education to look at ways to consolidate costs, and we are going to co-share not an occupational therapist assistant, but a fully-trained occupational therapist. So we will have that person half-time. Instead of paying $38,000, we're paying $25,000, $24,000, save us $14,000. We added that to the list, so that's about $54,000 right there. And then we always do a medicated reimbursement. When I came here, they've been using Kenny Services from my past. They've always used what's called Compuclaim. Scott Sugarman is our new Assistant Superintendent. He comes out of Thompson, who uses Compuclaim. They are a smaller district. They raise more money. Our poverty is higher. So we should be able to claim anywhere from $40,000 to $70,000. We've been averaging in the 20s. So we know that by shifting over to Compuclaim, and we already talked to them, and we have a prospectus on what our income could be for this year, they told us that we could expect at least $20,000 to $25,000 exclusive of their, they get a commission. Sorry about that. I know you're always on. Apologize. So what we have is an aggregate of about $79,000 that we know that I can give to the board, and with those, I'll be able to cut to 50,000. My goal is to give to them not a number and say we must cut these, but number one, their goal has always been, don't cut program for children, don't cut services, do what you can to preserve the program, and number two, to look for ways that we can economize on costs. So I can give them at least $79,000, $80,000. They still have in front of them, they reviewed up to $600,000 in the event that there was any challenge before us, so they have other things they can look at, but this guarantees the Board of Finance, the public, that they have in front of them, up to $78,000 they can look at, of which none of it would affect children and their learning. So I think we've got this $50,000 covered.
Ken? Any questions for Ken, Board of Ed side?
This isn't necessarily just for Ken, but we've talked about this several times, and I'm still having an issue with having adult education grant, 108, 600. First, we didn't want to count it, now we've got to count it, and now the town's going to pick up the lineup. Everything I've put online, 15 town budgets I went through, none of them have that adult education line in their town budgets. Our lack concern is a misappropriation of funds, and if we get called on it, we could possibly lose that adult education grant. And it does not affect NBR, because I talked to the state after the first time I was told this. An NBR violation? It would not be a violation of the NBR. I don't understand why we let this line item fall into the town budget.
I think, is there anybody to respond? I think we spoke to that last time, and in prior years, it hadn't been accounted for at all, and we're accounting for it this year. It's also within compliance of GASB Rule 65, which allows us to, specifically states that we shall appropriate funds the way we see fit. So we're in complete compliance with everything, and I'm not sure, we could circle back, and I can point that out to you if you want. I think if you go online, you can download it yourself, GASB Rule 65, which directs you to, or which help you clarify your uncertainties. But in prior years, all I can say is that it wasn't even acknowledged in the budget. Expenses of this fund wasn't even acknowledged, and that's exactly what we're doing this year. We're in full compliance with federal regulations.
I have a fault for the page four of the budget we have in front of us tonight, 2017, 2018 approved budget, 105, 210. 2018, 2019 approved budget, 105, 210.
You're right, but I would ask you to see where in the Board of Education budget that is expensed, and that's where it was misappropriately accounted for. It was not expensed, and that's probably why, when the budget was initially created this fiscal year, it wasn't included at all. So beginning of the budget process, the 108, which is directly next to the two numbers that you referenced, was initially not included, and I'm guessing it's because it wasn't expensed in previous years. So yeah, this year, we're probably accounting for it, but we're doing it on the town side, so it is being expensed, and it is a pass-through to Eastcon, which is really no expense to the town at all, so there's no effect on the mill rate whatsoever, so I'm not exactly sure what the, what the issue is.
The issue is, it's in the last prior year budget. So where you tell me the 105, 120 went? The last two years?
Well, you're going to have to ask the previous finance director.
From Ken.
I don't know where it was expensed. It wasn't reported in the previous budgets as an expense, only as a revenue source.
Yes, you're correct. It should be, but somebody is getting the money. So somebody wrote a check to Eastcon, like you said. Who wrote the check to Eastcon?
I believe it's the Board of Education.
Correct. I know it is, because also, when you read the Connecticut School a lot, you have to, the Board of Education has to provide adult education. That's what the grant is for, and that's what the state's holding. So how can that money end up on the town side?
Well, I think it's being expensed by the town. It's not as if it's the town killing me that's paying for it on behalf of the Board of Education in Plainfield. We're all working on, it's all the same budget essentially, even though it's operating separately. So I'd say the source of funds or the entity that the fund is being expensed from is essentially the same.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, it's a pass-through, and it goes directly to Eastcon. Am I wrong in saying that, or it goes to you and then to Eastcon?
Let me check. Ron, the check is actually made to the town.
That's correct.
So when you receive funding such as Title I funds, they are held in your fund balance, but they don't show anywhere on any register. They don't show on the town side, the school side, because it is a restricted account that can only be used for that purpose. The adult head funds is a check made to the town of Plainfield. When we have to pay Eastcon, because we'll pay for it, they just move that money to our account, and we just write the check. We don't get the check, we don't cash the check, the town does, and then we just tell them to take the money from the fund balance, they put it in, and pay the check to Eastcon because we write the check, they move it into our account for that time, and we do that. And it could be handled either way, as Mr. Charwood said. I think because we were trying to be transparent, and it had only been shown on one side without the other, since it wasn't being added to the school, we put it on the town side. If they need that corrected, we will change that in the future, but right now, at least, the public knows that the money is coming in, it is going out, and it's part of the $98,000 that we have in addition to that, to make the $200,000 that's required.
Again, with no effect on the mill rate, zero ramifications on the impact of the taxpayer.
Okay, other discussions on the proposed 2019-2020 budget? Any other discussions, questions? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to citizens' participation. I open the floor.
Just a question. Name is that? Andrew Hoffman, 16 Vac. How will the vote take place? Would that be taken like it was the last time? Where people come in during the day to cast their ballot, or are they going to herd in everybody to move here? As they have done before.
Yeah, no, it's not, you know, the same way as referendum. Kathy, could you...
So the town meeting, and excuse me for my voice, when you vote by the town meeting, you'll be checked in at the door to make sure that you're a registered voter or a property owner? And what will happen? Yes, everybody will come into the town meeting, and then you will be given a piece of paper, and it will be a motion, whether you want a paper ballot or a hand vote, or how you want it to be done, but you will be handed a piece of paper at the time you walk through the door, but until a motion is made, how that vote is to be made, that's how it will be determined.
So it's going to be a town meeting, yes?
A town meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you. The day, you know, the day of the vote. June 12th, thank you.
And Kathy, also just to be clear on that, by the way, that's 7:30?
7:30.
Not 7:30, 7:30.
7:30.
Other citizens' participation.
Sioux Falls Central Village, what happens if there's more than 800 people here? The fire marshal going to let us both in this, be outside and in line, or if there were that many people that showed up, we would have to move to the high school.
Kathy, that's it, 1000.
How many total votes did you give before?
Total votes from the referendum?
Yeah.
So you gave something?
Yeah.
Other citizens' participation.
Good evening. Arthur Condon, 90, Groce Street, 4th Avenue. How will this vote be publicized?
Let's see. Well, I know that we're trying to utilize, first the social media side, use... Let's see, well, I know that we're trying to utilize, first the social media side, using our Facebook page. It's also posted.
It's in the newspaper.
In the newspaper.
And what will happen is the signs will go up, but we just have vote today signs, so they will be put out probably that morning.
Will they be put out at the voting, oh, there's only the one voting location?
It's just here, so they'll be in all the villages.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing I could note is, I know on the, I know the topic of signs, if there's anybody who has signs and would like to make them. Now, I know you have made signs before, homemade signs. But certainly if there's anybody voluntarily who would like to make signs and say, like, voting soon, or voting in the next week or something like that, meaning you'd like to get them up ahead of time as a reminder to people, that's certainly an option voluntarily. But as Kathy noted, as of now, we only have vote today signs. I know a number of people, I believe myself, I've talked to Kathy inside about as far as what are we going to make differently in the future? As far as reminding people now on the day of, but before. And so that is something that we need to discuss in the future, maybe getting new signs, other signs that don't say vote today. But something to remind everyone of the voting in the future, and whether the next week, so that way they don't just go out on the day of. And also making sure that they're spread throughout town, not just here at the town hall, but obviously all four of our villages. So just wanted to make that note, that is a subject that has been discussed and looked at.
And the highway did do a good job, and Ron, making sure that they were in all the villages. We did purchase more signs last year to make sure that we have some in all the villages, because originally there were only 10 signs. So we did order them.
Other citizens' participation? No other citizens' participation? All right, very good. In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Okay, a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Time out. Could we not have to vote again on what we want to set it at? There has to be another motion, correct, to decide what we, we have to accept these cuts.
Lieutenant Mulberry, have the, uh?
No, 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 it's kind of saying that what we reviewed tonight in the proposed budget.
Has this changed?
Right, we need to entertain a motion. So yeah. Very good point. So yeah, we will. Nine motion for adjournment. Opening up for a motion to approve what we discussed tonight for the changes to the 2019 and 2020 budget moving that forward to company. Okay. Second, okay. Any other discussion?
So what's the mill rate's going to be? That has to be included in this motion?
The mill rate's in the budget.
Just so it still should be, calls up the mill rate would be?
We don't, we don't set the mill rate till after vote today.
You have to, people have to know what they're voting on. You've got to make the motion. You have to make the motion on what the amount's going to be. You cannot make the motion and just, let's throw it forward. We cannot do that.
We can wait before the number, aren't we, like, not the mill rate?
If you're pushing the budget forward, okay, it's stated on page five, so essentially you're, you're stating the mill rate.
All right, so you want to take that as a motion? All right.
All of the citizens, they make this before, that's what we have here.
Right, everybody's got a conscience.
Right.
Yeah, you can indicate that when you're reading it directly off the proposed budget, but that we're not setting it. This is what is reflected in the proposed budget, it's going to be a town meeting.
You have to give a figure. You can't just say, it's in front of everybody. You have to give a figure. If you want to make the motion for what we want to do, you have to give a figure. Because it has to go on the town notice. I'm against the budget, so I'm not going to motion it. So don't look for me to motion it. I'm not going to. I've always known, whatever comes up, it's going to do what's in the proposed budget. We cannot do that. It's not a legal motion.
Can you retract this on the town that moment?
Okay.
I'll retract.
Don, retract the motion.
I'll retract the second.
My motion, we accept the proposed budget as presented with a .372 mill rate increase from the total mill to 28.3.
Okay, a motion is second. Discussion? So there's no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nope.
Extentions? Motion carries. All right, now I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, a motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.